Thank you. Of county commissioners meeting, our legislative meeting of October the 7th. We've been running, we had a lot of events today, both of us and also Commissioner Dreehouse. But we're going to get started. And our first order of business, as it always is, is silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. And if you could take a few moments, just a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Amen. And if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I would, before we approve of the minutes, if we could just go down and introduce ourselves, so the public will know who's up here serving them in the county.
Leslie Harvey, interim clerk.
Alicia Reese, Vice President, Hamilton County Commission.
County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Hi, Stephanie Summeradumas, President of the Board. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second, Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And our first order of business is a proclamation recognizing October the 3rd through the 9th as Firefighter Prevention Week. And we have in front of us, it's a proclamation, and we will get, we've been running so much, we have, this one is not signed, but I know there is an agreement among the board that we recognize this prevention week. I actually just left from the firefighter, we all did, from the firefighter's memorial ceremony, and it was just awesome, sad, but awesome, but very much needed. And I truly enjoyed it. I'm sure the other two may have some comments in a few minutes. But I'd like to read the proclamation, now we have a few people here to speak. Okay, so I'll read the proclamation, and then you're welcome to come up. Okay? The proclamation recognizes on October 3rd through 9th as Fire Prevention Week. And whereas UC Health and Hamilton County Fire Departments are committed to...
Do you have a copy? Do you guys have a copy? Because I'm going to let you read some of it. You don't read that.
Okay, okay. Committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are in the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association and Fire Departments in the United States, they responded to 339,500 home fires. And where a smoke alarm since smoked well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have a little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the rest of dying in home fires in half. And whereas Hamilton County residents should be sure, everyone in the home understands the sounds and alarms and knows how to respond. You need to have a safety plan for sure. Whereas Hamilton County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Hamilton County residents will make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. I'm going to go on and read the rest because it's important. Whereas Hamilton County's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Hamilton County residents who are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme is, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety Effectively," serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, be it proclaimed that October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, is Fire Prevention Week. And we urge all Hamilton County residents to learn the sounds of fire safety and support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, thus hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week in all of Hamilton County, and it is signed by all of the Commissioners. Please come forward.
Thank you, President Summeradumas, Vice President Reese, and Commissioner Dreehouse. I'm Elizabeth Dale. I'm the Medical Director of the Burn Center at the University of Cincinnati Medical Center. This is Julia Slater. She's our Assistant Director. And Chad McGarvey is our Burn Program Manager. On behalf of our team, I wanted to just tell you what an honor it is that you would declare this week Fire Prevention Week. We at the Burn Center recognize that we are always ready to care for patients who are injured by burns, but that care starts with preventing fires in the first place. Ensuring that our community has ready access to smoke and carbon monoxide detectors and knows what those sounds mean are key steps to making sure people are able to get to safety. The efforts on the part of our county fire departments to help install and provide these devices are truly extraordinary. And we want to be available to support those efforts in any way that we can. We're so grateful to the county for helping us bring attention to this important effort of fire prevention in order to save lives.
Thank you so much. You spoke well for all three. I was waiting for that. Okay, thank you so much. And we'll make sure you get this. Okay, okay. All right, we're going to move forward. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. I have one card. Mr. Nick Talbert.
I want to thank you both, President, Vice President, everybody that's here. I've been banging on this thing for four years. And I've been through hell trying to get this message out here. Talking to the Indians. And when I approached the city council with this, they're shocked. There's a map. And I've sent the map to each and every one of you. The Indians have mapped out from Canada, South North America, and South America. Their names are on it. And you won't even find the name Indian on it. You know how long it takes to map that out? Huh? And the same, the map that we got, guess where they got it from? They got it from them. I ain't met nobody on city council, including the mayor, with all these college degrees. Nobody. They don't even know. Cincinnati is in the lead of this. Why? It's spiritual. It is. I didn't think, I thought it was all baloney, no it ain't. But real quick, and I hope I got enough time. See this right here? A pumpkin. I never understood why they celebrated this. I never understood it. You know why they celebrated it? The real celebration was connected to nature. What it was, it's a skull. It's a skull. That's what it represents. You go into the Mexican restaurants, you see the skull. They celebrated death. Secret of May, Mardi Gras, Halloween is the celebration of the dead. That's what this represent. Indigenous people and the masons work together on that. That's what they celebrate. And so I'm hoping we can get that map to start out. The true celebration with all this represented. The dead ain't dead. It ain't, it ain't dead. The dead they did. I thought it was. No it ain't. They'll tell you that. All three celebrations, Mardi Gras, Halloween, the celebration of the dead, and that's what this represent. Skull.
Thank you. And Mr. Talbert, I just wanted to mention to you that in 2019, we celebrated, proclaimed Indigenous Day, Indigenous People Day. And I forgot when you were here before that we had done that. And so Columbus Day is not celebrated by Hamilton County staff here. But I will be presenting to my colleagues, we already have a proclamation, and we'd like to celebrate it on the 12th of this month. In agreement, if we, you know, can get everyone to sign. But we did do it in 2019, because after we looked at the history of Columbus and all that, we decided, they had already not been having the holiday, but we decided we wanted to celebrate Indigenous people. And we did it, and we'll be doing it this year, so.
I think personally, I think this, they did it for a reason. Because they knew it was a blessing to this nation.
Certainly, yeah.
And I think it's going to help us. You can't go forward, we got to go back.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh huh. Any additional public comments? No, hearing none. We'll move forward with comments and motions from our Commissioners. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I do have a couple comments. One, just want to highlight the 513 relief bus efforts are going really good. I think we've got almost 500 shots that have been given and served over 2,000 people as it relates to assistance in a variety of areas, rental, utilities, et cetera. Also, the bus today, for those who are watching that want to catch the bus, the bus today will be in the North College Hill. Oh, we were at the North College Hill Middle School last week. Went very well. We were at, Saturday, we were at New Prospect Baptist Church with the Lincoln Where Walking Club, and also the breast cancer MAMA Jam. And went very well. And just wanted to highlight that we will have a resolution coming back to honor Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we are today, we're in Corrine, Corrine Township. We're at the Northbrook Shopping Center, 1:30 PM to 5:00 PM across from Northgate Mall. We will be in Glendale tomorrow. We're going to Glendale for the first time. And we'll be returning to Wanted Hills. There is a street festival in Wanted Hills that we were invited to, and the bus will be there this Saturday. Next week, we'll be going to some new areas for the first time, Finney Town on Monday. So I'll tell people that, so they can get ready for Monday, where we'll be at Finney Town. And you can go to our 513relief.org to find out where we are. But we also be in Camp Washington. We're going to Harrison, and we're going to Cleve. So you can go to 513relief.org. And I'm told we are booked for October. So many people wanting the bus, so we're booked for October. So wanted to let people get ready for their calendars. We also are getting, giving out free home COVID test kits. That has been something that people are looking for. They're listening to our Health Commissioner Kesterman, who testified here and told people they should have one at their house. So people are listening and watching and, and looking for those, but we also give those away. We're still giving out $100 Visa gift card for your first shot. There's still too many people out there who have not taken the first shot at all. As well as we are giving out boosters, there's no money for boosters, but we are giving out the Pfizer booster shot. Wanted to also highlight, folks know that I'm a huge sports fan. I just want to give a shout out to UC Bearcats football team. We beat Notre Dame. It was amazing game. And our Bearcats represented us well. We're number five now in the country. So that's really exciting, and just wanted to give a congratulations to the UC Bearcats. We all, and I know Commissioner Dreehouse probably will talk about this more, but was, all of us were out today announcing an important initiative with the quick response teams and the partnership with YumaDOT focusing on African-American males. And there was a national story that came out that was in NPR in September that highlighted black opioid deaths increased faster than whites, spurring calls for treatment and equity. And they, the study went on to say it was conducted in partnership with the National Institute on Drug Abuse at the National Institute of Health, where it analyzed overdose data and death certificates from four states, Kentucky, Ohio, Massachusetts, and New York. It found that the rate of opioid deaths among African-Americans increased by 38%. And other groups remain the same. We don't want one soul to overdose. I don't care what race you are, what neighborhood. But when we see a category that is moving and exploding at alarming numbers, we have to stop and say, wait a minute, how do we stop the bleeding? And so was excited to join my colleagues here at the Board with this announcement of the quick response teams that will focus along with, in partnership with YumaDOT, that will go into these communities where folks that look like them go and taking resources right there to help people. And I thought that was great. And certainly, we are national leader, and I'm sure others will come back to research how we did it. So wanted to highlight, we saw a problem, and I guess the right word is we had a quick response. And that's why it's called a quick response team. So was excited to be a part of that. And then last but not least, we all were rushing here after going to the firefighter's memorial ceremony, something that I've always attended as a vice mayor, a state rep, and now as a county commissioner. But certainly, just to say that to those families that your loved ones will never be forgotten, their service will never be forgotten. And we were there as a commission in a unified way to acknowledge our appreciation for the work of our firefighters in all of our, in our villages, those in townships, and those in cities across Hamilton County. So that's all I have right now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes, thank you. I, yes, I did want to highlight the quick response team initiative that's going on. Thank you both for coming to, and thank you to YumaDOT for hosting an event that talked about our extra efforts. Because what we know is that we've got an increase in overdoses in the African-American community. This is a trend that began a couple years ago at a much lower rate, but now we're seeing a spike. And we heard one of the folks that spoke from YumaDOT talk about how fentanyl is being mixed into marijuana and cocaine, oftentimes the drug of choice in the African-American community, and so hence the increase in the overdoses. And so the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, along with YumaDOT and the African-American Working Group, decided to launch the quick response team. Many, many thanks to Megan Gosny and Tom Fallon for helping with the effort along with the others that were at the event this morning. And so what we're hoping is that this extra special effort focusing on African-American males will help us see a decrease in the overdose deaths in the African-American community. And I referenced a stat coming from the Ohio Department of Health that says that 45206, which is the zip code for Walnut Hills, showed the highest increase in African-American deaths in the state. And so YumaDOT is located right in the middle of that community. And so again, very grateful for that partnership, because I think that's kind of hitting the problem right where it is. And so what we'll be looking forward to seeing, the results of this effort. It has been, it's been helpful and very productive throughout the rest of the county. And so now we're hopeful that that kind of success can be seen in the African-American community. Secondly, I, too, we were all rushing in from the firefighter memorial. It's always a nice event. I was honored to stand with the both of you at that event and offer a resolution in commemoration of those that we've lost amongst our firefighters throughout the 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County. The third thing, and the last thing I have is more, I'm looking forward to the International Day of the Girl, which is celebrated internationally. But in Cincinnati, we've got a group that is organized, and they have this event every year. Jenny Brady is kind of the spearhead, but the Commission on Women and Girls is helping, especially the girls on the Commission are helping. And so the International Day of the Girl Celebration this year will be held at the zoo. My, my public relations person, Fatima Ba, will be there. She has also helped to organize. So it starts at the zoo at noon. You, it is free, but you do need to register. And so you go to the International Day of the Girl website, and you'll find it there. And along with admission, you will be welcome to participate in the program. They've got people, women and girls from all over the world speaking to the issue of peace this year. The, the theme is building peace to create communities where we can all flourish. So I think this is going to be a great celebration. And after people go to the event, they are welcome to walk around the zoo. So there's a bonus this year because of the venue. So anyway, if anybody's interested, go to the Day of the Girl website, and you can register for free for the event starting at noon on Sunday. Or call my office, and Fatima will give folks information. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a couple things, as I mentioned earlier, Columbus Day is on the 11th. I will be forwarding a proclamation to both offices to see if we can repeat what we had done in 2019. We did not do in 20, as far as celebrating Indigenous People Day. And you will be getting that, I'm sure, right, right after this meeting to take a review and see if you're in agreement. And I'm hoping that we can look at it on Tuesday, if not, as soon as possible. In addition, WOWT was here, and I did an interview for a special on Let's Talk Cincy. I'm not sure if it's going to be this weekend or next weekend as it relates to domestic violence. And so they, I won't be the only one on there. Three or four other people they interviewed, and I'm excited about that. I'll let you know the exact time if you'd like to watch it. As it relates to, and I have my purple ribbon on, of course, for Domestic Violence Month, which we all celebrated. But we had so many entities that wanted to be a part of the awareness for this month. And we have confirmed, of course, Powell Brown Stadium will be lit up in purple this weekend. It's going to be the primary weekend, Great American Ballpark, TQL Stadium, Fountain Square, Duke Energy Center, and several others are just doing it because I found out this past weekend, there was a lot of purple. Not only will they be lighting up their stadium, but the scoreboards would actually have the message on there about, "Don't Suffer in Silence." And so every scoreboard will be lit up for this weekend. So if you want to take a field trip and go around and look, you're certainly welcome. I plan on it. I wanted to say, in addition, I was on a webinar yesterday, because every Commissioner is on a committee through CCAO. And I'm on the Human Services Commission and the Public Safety Committee, I should say. And we had a webinar yesterday I thought was very interesting. I'm going to talk to Amy Moore about it from JFS. It's about adult protection services and how JFS, we always think about JFS for children, and that's a great thing, but there are some adults that we also help and give services to. And I'm not as up to snuff on what we do for adults, and I want to find out more. And they gave some good ideas, and I told them I for sure wanted them to ask Hamilton County about what we do, because we've been a model for the state. So I'm going to be reaching out to Amy's story to find out more information on what we do with adults. And so we mentioned earlier about those events. I don't need to bring those up that we had today. So I will go to Jeff Aluto, our Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Just three by leave items today. They are on your agendas as by leaves one, two, and three. They are both, or all three of them are related in that they are petitions for annexation from a township into the village of Indian Hill. Each of them relate, each of these, the petitions for each of the annexations are separate. However, they are all being performed under Section 709.16 of the Higher Revise Code, which relates specifically to the annexation of municipally-owned property. So the typical process for this is that we will receive them, place them on the next agenda of the Board, which is today. We would, essentially receiving them for the record. They will then be, they will be transmitted to the county engineer. The county engineer will assess the petitions for annexation for accuracy of the legal description, et cetera. You will then receive a report back as early as next week or the subsequent week detailing whether or not everything is in order as it relates to the petition. If it is, there will be a resolution to approve the annexation. If not, the county engineer would then go back and have additional discussions with the petitioner on what would need to happen from a legal description perspective. So today, all you are doing is acting to receive these for the record and transmit them to the county engineer for that assessment. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Any questions or comments as it relates to receiving these for the record? Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record by leave one, two, and three.
Second, Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners. No further by leaves.
Thanks. We will move forward on our regular, one, a regular agenda item. Mr. Beck, who walked out on me the other day. No.
I didn't know you needed to.
No, I saw, I saw engineer on his, his resume or whatever, and what he was putting in for. I thought, okay, you might want to.
I come in to hear Mr. Kesterman.
Okay, very good. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Just one item in front of you today. We have a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the Board of Trustees of Sycamore Township for the construction and maintenance of improvements to Larchview Drive and Plainville Drive, Plainfield Drive in Sycamore Township. It's Project 502006. The total project cost is $3.2 million. Forty-six percent of that we have received Ohio Public Works grants for in a total of $1,444,850. Twenty-nine percent of the funding will come from Sycamore Township, and the remaining 25% from the county engineer's permissive auto funds. That's the 807-230-16.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Any questions as it relates to this item? Item one. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number one.
Second. Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And so, thank you. So under consent agenda items, we have a few items. I know we want to pull out item number four, because there may be some discussion on that. But as relates to two, three, five, six, seven, and eight, is there any discussion on any of those items?
Madam President.
Yes.
So since the engineer is still here, he has not walked out yet. So I had pulled the budget adjustment number 33. This is related, Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Call you Eric, but Mr. Beck. It's item number five. To capital projects that have been closed out. Could you just help walk us through this real quick? Because the amount of money, that $3 million is very high. And I did go through the projects. Can you just help us understand this process a little bit better?
Sure, absolutely. When we first are authorized to go to bid, you set a dollar amount that we appropriate and set aside for the contract. As we go through construction, we expend that monies, those monies. Once we get to the end of the job, we final out the job with the contractor, make all, make sure all his suppliers and subcontractors are paid. Once we close the job out, the monies that remain in that appropriation then get transferred back. And that's what these are. We've closed out several projects in the last 12 months. And this is trying to get caught up and move that money back.
Okay, great. Thank you. I did note that one of them, the balance was $6.68. So I applaud you for being so close. All right.
Go over, though. We strive not to go over contract and be on time on everything.
Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Thank you so much. Okay, so why don't we deal with the ones that are before us? Item two, three, five, and six, I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Second. Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And then I'd like to make a motion to accept for the record, item seven and eight. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so what, so item seven, or receive for the record, make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. And make a motion to adopt item number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So let's go back to, thanks, Mike. Item number four. There may be some discussion on that item. Jeff, did you want to lead, or just say a little clarify?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So this is a budget adjustment related to three items. There is additional lab work in our pretrial services division of the courts. There is additional revenue for the land bank and a coroner drug testing grant, which is being closed out. In total, the budget adjustments relate to $581,183.59. The largest of those relates to additional revenue for the land bank, which is a total of $581,428.94. So just a little bit of background on this one. So the Board of County Commissioners, under the Higher Revised Code, can appropriate or can designate an additional 5% of delinquent tax revenue to, upon request of the treasurer, to come to the county and be placed in the treasurer's delinquent tax in, in assessment collection fund for appropriation by the board to the land bank. So the board took that action back in 2011. So an additional five, an additional 5% of delinquent tax collections that come in are able to be appropriated by the board for the use of the Land Utilization Corporation in Hamilton County. So the board, for the 2021 budget, voted on a budget that we anticipated coming in for the, that 5%. The revenues have exceeded that 5% by the $581,428.94. And so this is, would be the action of the board to take those dollars from the Delinquent Tax Assessment Collection Fund and provide them to the Land Utilization Corporation for the programming in the direction of the Land Utilization Corporation Board. So all you're doing is taking the additional revenue that came in under that 5% and appropriating it to the land bank. That, and I did, commissioners recognizing that there was a question about this. I did split, had Mr. Brugan, who's working heavily on the budget, had him split out these two. So the clerk has separated these items into budget adjustment number 35 and budget adjustment 31. So they could be considered separately if the board so desired.
Okay, so where is that information from, John? Okay.
The clerk has it ready.
Okay.
So. Budget adjustment number 35 is going to have to go by leave, since it was not on the, the agenda.
So I'll open it up for any questions or, or comments. Vice President Reese.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. This item has a broad title of budget adjustment. And in there, and I apologize, I did not catch, and I want to thank Jeff for alerting me to it. I did not catch the part about the increase that's available to transfer to the land bank. And there are other items in here, municipal court, free child services, I have no problem with that. Coroner, reduced public health drug testing grant, I have no problem before with that. But in this bundle, and I'm not really big on the bundles, but in this bundle, it has the increased amount of $581,428.94 for the land bank. Now, it's on here twice. Can I get some clarification, and then I will give my comments? It has on here twice. It has real property fees. And then, and that's item number 0282. Then it has another line item, 0910, construct, contractual services. Is that, that we're bringing it in and then moving it to?
Yes, yeah. Budget Director Brugan can answer that as well.
Okay.
Yes. Any, any item where we're changing appropriations, and there's a revenue that's coming in, we recognize both pieces on the regis, on the legislation. So what the board has to vote on is the expense, the contractual services piece of it. But we include the revenue piece on it, because that has to go to the auditor's office, and they have to recognize the resource side of it.
Gotcha. Okay. And our land bank, we have to have a land bank, but we, we contract the Port Authority to run our land bank. And just a couple of weeks ago, it's not a question for you, John, but just want to give some of my comments. A couple of weeks ago, and I want to just say, I want to get more understanding, and I know I'm on the land bank, but we go to land bank meetings, not on YouTube. It's not, the people don't know what it is, and we're taking people's homes and properties. We're in a little room over to the side, and then they come with, here's what we got, and they got some numbers. But I would love to have them come in and do a whole session on the land bank, because we're talking about neighborhoods are changing, some for the better, some not for the better, because people losing their property sometimes, if they don't feel it's the better. I made the comment last week to the Port Authority when they were here, that we have had a practice that has had double standards. I will give you an example, Madam President. I learned myself. I didn't know we could buy hotel properties and put the hotel properties in the land bank. I thought we were just dealing with houses until the Carousel Hotel and the Drake Hotel came up. Now, on the surface, it might have sounded good. But right after we made that vote to pay, I think, 1.5 million to buy the Carousel and the Drake Motel, which other people wanted to buy, but they don't have a land bank, so they have to pay the taxes, right? So when you buy something, the tax follows you. So what makes the Port Authority attractive is that, it's not that they're doing anything magical, it's the fact that they are paid by us to manage the land bank, which is the only thing that either can pay to people's taxes, and you can sit on it, and you don't pay no taxes. So you can sit on 15, 20 years and don't pay us a dime. So with this, that we're talking about giving more money to this land bank, and I'm getting complaints that we're having double standards. And then, when we came to the committee for this Carousel Hotel, and they said it's an urgent matter, we had, we need to move on it. And then I find out, right after we moved on it, WCPO comes out and talks about $40 million judgment on the owners, and one of these properties is the Carousel Hotel and the Drake Hotel. So maybe if we waited two more weeks, it would have went into foreclosure. We wouldn't have gave these owners $1.5 million. We might have got it for $100,000, because it would have went into foreclosure. So now it gets me a little, I'm a little concerned about the rush and not getting all the information. We got to hurry up and do this. We hurry up and did it, and the next day or two days later, this big thing came out. It says that we, we, the owners, Blue Tide, who owned the property, they were about to be foreclosed on, they owed a lot of taxes, and we're paying their taxes because of the land bank. And I was just concerned about this. And in fact, that Carousel, he had a good idea. They couldn't pull it off, this Blue Tide group. It says they had planned to convert the Carousel Inn and the Drake Motel to housing for veterans. And now we, we're not talking about housing for dead veterans now. Housing for veterans, but they could not get the zoning approval from Sycamore Township. But we got approval to buy, give this person $1.5 million when they were getting ready, and it's a lot of judgments against this person. So I'm sure the Port Authority was very aware of all these judgments that were coming down, because they kept coming down, one after the other. Now, I don't stay in the court following them, but I know the Port Authority does. So they know this person was on the edge. They knew that this property is getting ready to go into foreclosure. And they brought us a deal to pay premium price, not foreclosure price, for the property, and then transfer it to the land bank. So the common denominator in all this is this land bank. That's what I'm getting complaints on. We go to certain communities, we threaten. And I've seen it, because I've seen it before I got here. People getting threatened, particularly in communities of color. "We're going to take your house. You better get out of here." I remember with the Reverend Bingo, he got hit with something. He, he had to run down to the court. They had to stop him, because he couldn't get this wall fixed or something. He didn't have enough money, and they were coming in. These people are coming in. So I don't want to use the land bank as a weapon to, on the little guy, the homeowner, the person that don't have the big-time lawyers. We use that to take their land, and I'm getting ready to give them another $500,000. But then over here, we're using it to help bail out some of the big boys. So I would just want to hold this. It wouldn't be a rush to pass the money on. We have enough money, because they're buying up everything. To hold this until we can have a full presentation with questions, understanding that's on YouTube television, that's on Facebook Live, that the people can tune in to understand, we got a new treasurer now, to understand what is this land bank? How is it operating? What are the rules? Certain communities, they're invited to. I haven't seen one thing that the Port Authority has went into a township or one of those areas, they're not running in Hyde Park telling them what to do. When they come, now, I don't know if they out riding around in the black community, looking for houses to take, or are people calling them and say, "Come take these houses"? I don't know what it is. So I would like to have that. And that's why, Madam President, I would appreciate, if possible. If not possible, I'll, I'll vote no. But I would appreciate if we could hold it and, and have a full presentation. The money's not going anywhere. It can't be used for anything else. Hold on. I hope they're not out already spending the $500,000. Last time I checked in our land bank meeting, we weren't low on cash. If we could hold it until we could have a full understanding. Because, Madam President, I'm going to be honest with you. I did not like the fact that I was told that we had to hurry up on this deal. And then a day or two later, here come WCPO, and come to find out the property that we paid premium dollar on could have been taken into foreclosure, we might have got it for $100,000. And we paid the taxes on it, $160,000 because of the, the land bank. So I just want to get more information, and, and that's not the only hotel. They got the Millennium. We bind up all these hotels with no plan of doing nothing with them. So I would hope that we could hold that. And I apologize, I did not catch it when we received it, because it came in as a bundle deal, and I just thought it was an adjustment like the other is number five. So I didn't get to dig into it, but I do want to thank Jeff for bringing this to my attention, because he knows that I'm very interested in the land bank. So anyway, that's what I, my thoughts are, Madam President, and appreciate the indulgence of the board to at least pull this item out.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, if, I know we have two budget adjustments. If we can talk about the land bank number 35, and then we'll talk about the other one.
Thank you. Yeah, so I would, too, would like to have the land bank come in, because I, I feel like they need to talk about the work that they do, because it's much, much broader than some of the things that we voted on recently. I've been involved with work with the land bank for many, many years as a state rep and as a community council member in Price Hill. And they've been a very good partner, trying to remove some vacant blighted properties that were really an eyesore and brought down property values for all the folks that lived in my neighborhood. And they have been doing good work in Walnut Hills and some of the other areas of the city and outside the city. So if we need to have a presentation from the land bank as to the work that they are doing and the work that they anticipate doing, I would also welcome that conversation. So I'm, I'm okay with splitting these apart. I'm ready to vote on all of it. But if there is a desire to split that apart and get the land bank into, do a presentation in order to get us more comfortable with what we're voting on, you know, one way or the other, then I'm fine with that, as long as it happens fairly quickly, just so we can use this money to help better some of these neighborhoods in the county. So I, I'm ready to go on the separation, if that's the will of the board or, or otherwise.
Thank you so much. As it relates to the land bank budget adjustment, I'm willing also to move it to next Thursday as it relates to this specific budget adjustment. And then Jeff, I'm wondering, the resolution that we passed that any excess revenue would go to the land bank that the commission passed, if we can get a, well, I guess I should ask Lesley if we can get a copy of what we had agreed upon as it relates to that. But in addition, this specific budget adjustment, I'd like to get more information and also a more total presentation, as was mentioned earlier, about the land bank and what they do. We can also do that, but specifically next Thursday, if we can address this. And I'm sure their definition of what they do in the community will come up as we discuss this budget adjustment. So I'm in agreement with separating it, as we have, and I'd like to make a motion. Jeff, were you?
Can I get clarification? So on the, I got, the two things I would say, land bank on the surface is not a bad idea. CHFs on the surface is not a bad idea. CRAs on the surface are not bad ideas. Tax incremental financing. All of those things start off good. So these tools aren't bad, and that's why elected officials, we got to keep our eye on. You know, we started out, a lot of these things were, you know, I supported on council, et cetera. But then, when you leave and nobody's paying attention, then they can, if they're not used or they are abused, then they, that's when we have the issues. My clarification is, you're saying we're going to vote on it on Thursday. Will we be able to have a presentation on Tuesday?
Well, I didn't say we were going to vote on it.
Oh, we just, okay.
We're going to bring it forward on Thursday, and the land bank will be here. And if we choose at that time to vote, we can.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
But if you'd like to have the discussion where they come in and talk about in general what they do, we could, we could do that on Tuesday. And then on Thursday, deal with this specifically, this budget adjustment.
Okay.
Is that the, that's what you'd like to have?
Yeah, well, I, I think it might be helpful to have him in on a Tuesday, where we can have a more broad conversation about the land bank in general, and then they can address some of the specific items.
Sure, that'll work.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
So let's make, I'd like to make a motion to table budget adjustment number 35 until next Thursday.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And so we have in front of us, since we did separate budget adjustment number 31 related to additional lab work and pretrial services and a coroner drug testing grant. Is there any comments?
Vice President.
Yeah.
Okay, and what's the total? I, I did, we need the total then that we're voting on. I did circle that it would only be for lab work and pre, and coroner drug testing grant and pretrial services. What's that total?
So the total is, is listed in?
I put my glasses on.
On the resolution of, of the, the sum of $245.35 is reduced from appropriations according to the attached schedule.
Those two items, it's actually a net reduction.
Okay, and what is it?
It's a reduction of $245.35.
Reduce it, Dan. What is, what's the total, Dan?
The total is negative $245 sum, because the grant is actually a reduction.
Okay.
Negative $245.35.
And it's slightly higher. The, the grant is a slightly bigger reduction than the addition than the pretrial services department.
Okay. So we had item number four. We're revising that motion to indicate that budget adjustment number 33, 31, related to additional lab work and pre, and pretrial services and a coroner drug testing grant, which equals negative 245.35 and 35 cents. I make a motion to that.
I would, I would move to formally rescind, rescind consent agenda number four and replace with the revised budget adjustment number 31.
And then separately vote.
Yes, but first we need to.
So I make a motion to rescind the original item number four.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. And I make a motion to adopt the revised motion of bu, budget adjustment number 31 for the total of minus. for the total of minus $245.35.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. I think you guys just want to.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Item number 35 was never put on the agenda, so I'm going to have to list that as a by leave item.
Okay.
Okay, and then I will put hold on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
To hold. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we have nothing else on our agenda unless there are some additional questions or comments from Vice President Reese.
Madam President, I forgot to also acknowledge a proclamation that all of us signed. It will be presented to the Multiple Sclerosis Motivational Institute. That event will be this Friday, founded by Marvis Green. It's going to be held at Smale Park. And certainly, this is a nonprofit that helps folks with multiple sclerosis. And many people may know, my mother, she ultimately passed from breast cancer, but she had multiple sclerosis for 12 years. And so the work that they're doing with research and trying to find some type of cure, just wanted to acknowledge them, and I would just want to thank both of you. It's a proclamation assigned by our entire board. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Nothing further.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Again.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.